Good deal. Thanks, Jeff. No, I don't want to make anyone something or not. There is a property.
Why do I hear? Why do I get stuff on here? Why is my computer singing to me? I know, but it shouldn't be coming through my computer. It's supposed to come through there only. It was supposed to be on the mics only. I'm muted on my audio.
Now, we've got a bid. Fifteen thousand.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, who knows if she gave it to me?
Aren't you supposed to have the VIP one? I don't have it either.
I gotta figure out who's stupid for these.
Oh, there. Thank you.
All the board members, if you guys look at your pad here, what you'll see is the chair will have a slightly different pad. What hers will have, the chair or leader of the meeting will have two buttons instead of one. And the two buttons, if the chair wishes to mute all mics, which you can click this and mute all of you once.
The power she has, my goodness. Isn't it great? Okay, everybody, we're going to get this started. It is six oh two and we're already late with a big meeting here. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Town of St. Joseph on May eighth of twenty twenty five at six oh two. Statement of public notice.
Hereby provided our written notice and the agenda of the public meeting as stated below. There's an opportunity for public comment as noted on the agenda upon recognition by the presiding officer.
A da- um, roll call. Everyone is here tonight. Take a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, it passes. Remove your hats and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Updates of upcoming meetings are on here for anyone interested in the Town of St. Joseph. Our open book is June twelfth and our board of review is June nineteenth. So you have any issues or comments or concerns about your assessment, that's the time to take care of it. Um, all our reports are in the file. I don't know if anyone went to the Towns Association last week. Was it last week? Did you go?
Yeah, we're just a couple updates that the county was granted was around about and then Trop Brook.
Okay.
That's brought all that interested me.
So E and I is coming.
Twenty twenty six.
Yeah, they just had a really too bad accidents there this last week again. And then the Trop Brook Bridge is next year.
Yep.
So Trop Brook Road will be shut down all next summer. So get ready.
Good times.
Get ready.
At that meeting, did the county bring up any changes to the plan commission or zoning? Or no? So at the plan commission last night, I know I'm jumping down.
Oh, so to identify, this is Towns Association.
Yeah, but I assume the county would have made the announcement.
Oh, no.
Okay, because we were alerted last night that there's a change in zoning. That means that the Plan Commission needs to revisit chapter one seventy.
One seventy, okay.
Subdivision.
Say that again, one more time, Anton, please.
I believe it was subdivision ordinance in chapter one sixty.
Okay.
One sixty eight.
One sixty eight, thank you.
Well, whatever, I'm sure you'll be on it. Anything else on reports from anyone that's not in our drive or not on the agenda tonight? Then we will move on. Public comment. This is public comment for anything that is not on the agenda that you want to bring before the board. Anyone have anything for not on the agenda? Public comment? All right, we will move on. The first thing I wanted to do tonight, and I failed to do this as often as I should. The governor proclaimed that the week of May fifth through the eleventh, which is what we are in, is um the proclamation for professional municipal clerks who play a critical role in our local government and election administration and are critical to the prosperity of the state and the endurance of our democracy. There are eighteen hundred and fifty municipal clerks in this state and seventy-two county clerks who strive to always be impartial in their handling of official duties guided by the overarching goal of providing fair treatment to all Wisconsinites regardless of background, identity, or political affiliation. It goes on to talk about all of the responsibilities they have as a municipal clerk, all the training they have to take and give, all the election administration that they do, and that they face, in the face of these challenges, professional municipal clerks continue to display courage, flexibility, resilience, and the dedication to their responsibilities for free and fair elections. Whereas this week, the state of Wisconsin joins all other Wisconsinites in recognizing and thanking professional municipal clerks for the important work that they do for communities across the state. And I just want to say thank you to Terry, our clerk treasurer here, and her staff for the great work that they do for us. So I just wanted to make sure and get that in, and it's something I should do more often than I do. All right, on to business. We have quite a few CSM's and lot line adjustments, and so we will start with the first one. Was a lot line adjustment for Ben and Leah Morosky at four sixty-two River Road here in Hudson. They're here tonight. I don't know if you have anyone with you tonight, but you can come up to the microphone, please. You're here?
I'm the surveyor.
Oh, you're the surveyor, okay. So this is an instance where they have a shed that is crossing over their property line, and you have combined these two lots from what I understand. So go ahead. Okay, so this is an instance where they still have to come in for a conditional use permit for their property, but this will combine it, so it puts them in, um it brings it together so that they can go forward. Up until this point, they could not go forward because the shed is sitting across the line. Anyone have any questions for him? Anyone want to make that motion?
Well, are the two driveways still going to stay there, though?
Till we get to the CUP.
Okay.
Yeah, because one services the shed and one services the house. And they were two separate lots, so we'll have to take that up at the CUP time when we talk about their business and what will happen there. Anyone want to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for Ben and Leah.
Morosky.
Morosky at four six two River Road. PID zero three zero dash one zero one seven dash nine five dash one four zero and zero three zero dash one zero one eight dash two zero dash zero zero zero.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it and get that out of the way, and then hopefully we can get on to the next thing. Lot line adjustments. We have two here for Donna Anderson because it's two separate things that you're trying to combine. And this one's a little convoluted, so would you like to explain to the board what you're talking about?
You guys took out your drawing. But Lucy wants to kind of relay out the lot thirty ten thirty-four of White Eagle. Get it all out, lay it out for us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's, that's that part of it. And um, and Lucy wants to combine that certified survey map with the rest of his thirty lot acres. He wants to combine all those two parts with no one person, for itself there, of the lot.
So that's, that's this big one.
Yeah.
Right. And then this is the small one up there. And then explain this driveway change that you've asked us to look at.
Yeah, and so on, existing lot thirty-four of White Eagle. Through the joint driveway between lot thirty-five and thirty-four, when the Anderson's one moves that driveway south with that joint driveway. So that joint driveway is right now, lot thirty-five actually has a driveway north of it, literally using it.
Right.
So if he'd rather, yeah, if you take a look at it, look at it, you know, I have ribbon out there where the full driveway is, but he moved it roughly eighty feet south of the.
So that's what you're doing by this instrument here is you're going to correct that and take, and take that out.
Yeah.
And vacate that, and then the new driveway is this little arrow right here. Okay. Yes, right. But I just want to make everyone clear. Anyone have any questions on this? Because it's a little bit of a convoluted.
Is it gonna, is it gonna take a cover?
For the new driveway?
Yeah.
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 Because there's slopes there. Yeah.
Yeah. Back from the, I didn't know if you were the ground driveway right now. Fresh, not bad.
It is a bad spot. I agree. Um, so we have this on the agenda as two separate things. It just seemed to be clear to do it that way. So does anyone else have any other questions for him? Otherwise, we'll have two separate motions here.
I'll make a motion for a lot line adjustment for Donna Anderson for lot thirty-three and lot thirty-four plat of White Eagle. PID zero three zero dash two one one five dash three zero dash zero 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 and PID zero three zero dash two one one five dash four zero dash zero zero zero.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? All the in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and that passed, and then go on to the second one.
I make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for Donna Anderson of two nine five hundred and twenty-fifth Avenue PID zero three zero two zero nine two dash six zero dash one zero zero and PID zero three zero two zero seven two dash five zero dash zero zero zero.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I've got this signed for you, so I'll come over. On the Morosky one, would you have an extra copy you want signed?
All right. What's the next thing on that agenda?
It's the CSM for Joseph Kiesling.
Okay, who wants to come up on that? All right.
One thing, I have a different certified survey map. If you want to look at it, I had to correct the legal description.
Okay.
On it. I brought copies if anybody wants them, otherwise the gist of the map is identical.
The map is pretty well correct. It's just that the description has changed. Okay.
Um, so Mr. Kiesling is just taking his existing lot and dividing into two lots as shown on the map. Uh, you can see that both lots are over the three acre requirement. Um, it is zoned as a res. And he will continue to use the existing driveway off County Road E. And the proposal uh for lot two is to use a new driveway off of Thielen Farm Trail.
Does he have enough real estate there on Thielen Farm?
He's got uh three hundred and twenty-seven feet of frontage. And probably it's like four hundred and fifty or four hundred and seventy-five feet down the center between, you're asking about the distance between the two driveways, yes.
On Thielen Farm.
You make two hundred either way.
But he makes the two hundred off of E.
Right.
Okay.
Well, and the other owner to the north is right in the corner of it.
Right. That's what we just want to make sure that we've got enough separation there. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for him? I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the CSM for Joseph Kiesling at one three six County Road E. PID zero three zero dash two zero four three dash four zero dash zero zero one.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. And then on to Jeremy McKean. Um, who's here for him? Oh, you're back for him, okay. Oh, I got to sign. Go ahead, you can start.
We have updated CSM's um for county and plan commission.
Perfect.
Last night.
Do you want to pass those over to Chris and he'll pass them down?
Basically, uh, Mr.
Thank you, how kind.
If this thing becomes three point seven acre lots, create one new three acre lot along Bass Lake Road and use the remaining twenty-four acre piece of the town. Driveway wise, that was one of the additions to this stopping and adding existing driveway on lot three to the door. Um, and show the full driveway. Ways laid out, there's about two hundred and eighteen feet of the existing driveway on lot three to where I have shown.
Wasn't it add the driveway, excuse me, to lot four?
Yes, the driveway was added to lot four, or I also added existing driveway on lot three.
Perfect.
Be able to show that.
Thank you.
Uh, one of the other things is the uh open space. When the original CSM that Doug did in twenty seventeen was completed, um, it was under county's own name, which was Credit Reds.
Yeah.
Open space on it. Um, we're looking to reduce that open space. Um, part of that open space is current farm field, which is not allowed. Um, planning commission recommended, uh, we have, we keep open space on pieces that are currently timbered. So that's what this map recommends.
Okay, anyone have any questions for him on that?
Nope, we met the requirements from the Plan Commission last night.
Yeah.
It was the driveway and the reduction in open space on the survey map.
I appreciate you putting in these driveways because I think it's important. Um when you don't do that, you run into issues later, and especially with rules change. Um, I've noticed in working in the town of Hudson that they have lots that can't get a driveway without a variance because the rules have changed. And if they would have put them on the maps, they would have been able to do that. So that makes a big difference. Anyone have anything else for them? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the CSM for Jeremy McKean at twelve twenty-four Bass Lake Road. PID zero three zero dash two zero one one dash nine zero dash four zero zero.
Second.
Anything else from anyone? Otherwise, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that carried. And next up is the CUP for William Defile.
With the feeling. There you go.
All right, you can start.
Representing uh Will and Kate Pell at seven seventeen Interior Lane, um, find their CUP for a secondary dwelling on their property. Um, the nature of the structure that they would be adding, um, they have a existing deep ass garage. Would be adding on additional garage space with a second floor living space. That would include um one bedroom, one bath, kitchen and living space, and an office. There, in sense, would be the planned use for that dwelling is for um intermittent use between visiting family members. Um, and things like that. They uh do not plan to use it as a permanent dwelling for anybody. Um, additionally, they do not intend to rent out either of the dwellings on the property.
Um, there were some comments made in the staff report that the po- oh, Plan Commission did mention last night. Um, you were there. Do you want to speak to it? Or do you want Anton?
Anton could probably reiterate it better. He's a little quicker than I am, but essentially the, the conversation boiled down to um, there was some changes that were going to be made to the house to accommodate this, and that the conditional use would be um renewed in, by the end of June of twenty twenty-eight. Anton, is there anything you want to add to my comment?
Um, yeah, we did ask about some other things in the staff, um, like lighting. The recommendation from um, the, the staff report recommendation was to um, look at a two-year conditional use permit. Um, given the schedule and so forth, we feared three years would work better. That would be basically two years after the completion of construction, two and a half. Simply to see that the conditions are being um met. There's, and because our ordinance requires that conditional use permits have a duration. Um, and we didn't see any conditions there that looked like they would need an earlier inspection.
Um, you're not going to install any other driveway than what's there, right?
Right.
Okay. Um, and is there any, oh, I'm sorry, is there any other landscaping proposed for this site?
No additional landscaping, just um on the on the site plan, uh, which he proposed driveway extension to
Okay.
The new garage.
All right. Anyone else?
You mentioned office in there, too. Did, did you mention that one bedroom bathroom and?
Correct. And one, and one office.
Did they work from home or?
They do, yeah. So I think the plan is to install um with perks, perks that new structure, that standalone septic, there's plenty of space on the lot. So we'd be installing a new septic for that new structure and sizing it larger than a, a one bedroom. Um, is the intent there.
Okay. Any other questions for anyone?
Not that, not that this is anticipated at all, but if a property is sold in the midst of a CUP, what's, what happens to the CUP to the new, for the new property owners?
They need to reapply.
They need to reapply, okay.
That's the way it is in our ordinance. It doesn't go with a property unless we state it as such. So if they sell it, that goes, you know, they'll have to come back in and apply. Are you okay if we make this conditional on what was in the staff report regarding color should be consistent, there won't be any additional lighting and no rentals and a three-year review?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so you're comfortable. Yeah, I, I would presume they would.
Um, but really, my only question is on the renewal. Is that the same or similar process as the initial uh CUP application, or is that um does it go through the same review process, or is it?
It will go through a review process with the Plan Commission.
Okay.
And if they don't see anything, that's a problem. That just continues. Isn't that correct, Anton?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only difference from what was posted in the staff report, and I believe the recommendation from the Plan Commission was a number four, we wouldn't do the two-year, we would do the
Three.
End of, well, essentially, the motion stated to be at, by the end of June twenty twenty-eight.
Oh, okay.
So that they had some, the Plan Commission didn't want to lock us into a, like, oh, it has to be on the seventh of June in case something changes, so.
Okay, I'm fine with that. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the CUP. Oh, go ahead.
So for the water piece, are they going to drill another well on the property?
No, they're going to extend service from the existing uh dwelling to.
Okay, and then the current septic has a section set aside option, and then the new septic has been design-built and?
Yeah, we um also perched next to the, and, and uh did an inspection on the existing drain field for the
Okay.
The existing structure and have adequate space next to the existing septic to um to reconstruct that if needed.
Okay. Usually people down there run out of real estate.
Yeah, luckily it's a steep, steep slope. They're set back and it's nice and flat up top.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the CUP for William DePhil at seven seventeen Interior Lane for the um conditional use permit for the second, secondary dwelling. Conditional upon that the colors in this dwelling should be somewhat consistent with the original dwelling. That there won't be any additional lighting. There will be no rentals of that facility that they're building, and that the CUP will be reviewed again in June of twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate it. And you're set to go, and she'll send that motion out to you and to the building inspector, because you'll need that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So St. Croix Crossing, St. Croix Crossing is on the, um, agenda tonight because we are talking about bypass and passing lanes and the concerns of some of the neighbors who live on Highway thirty-five. So you have information in your drive regarding this. Um, they have talked to the DOT. They contacted me, and I said we would bring them in here to let the board hear what their concerns are about these um passing and turn lanes and and we can go from there. So who wants to come up and speak? And just make sure to pull the microphone towards you so we can hear you.
Thank you for seeing me. Uh, I'm Tom Tierney. I live at twelve fifty-four Highway thirty-five. We bought the house about five years ago. Jeff Johnson, he's a, a good friend and has been helping with the, the house, the engineering on the house, and also um he's with SEH or formerly SEH, so he's been helping with the discussions with the Wisconsin DOT. So um, and we're asking to get some help um with the cost and expense of the passing lane across from the new development that's going there. And I'll let Jeff go from there.
Thank you much, Tom. Yeah, Tom uh said the house did a lot of work on the house, fixed up really nice, um, placed an existing fence with a, a new one, so it's in good condition. But on the same alignment, uh, had heard about a year ago that a development was proposed across the highway from him, which he had no objection. Plans to develop a little bit further now, and the entrance to that development is directly across from his driveway. Uh, because of the size of the development of over ten or so homes, uh, the DOT uh has required that a turn lane be put in and then a bypass lane for the left turn going southeast, and that bypass lane uh moves the road at least the twenty, but bypass lane plus another eight, closer to Tom's uh property. Uh, the space is pretty limited there. The fence is in the right way, the right way is closer to the house. Uh, today I'm submitting to Tom, which fence I purchased that. Uh, but he would like to keep his fence there because the proximity of the road requirement of the state, uh, when they build a bypass lane, uh, there's ten or more homes there that would be required, but also uh to pull into his driveway, he's had a gate there. Uh, now that the road is closer there, wouldn't be room for a car to turn off the shoulder, above the gate, get out, press the button, or call him open gate uh without sticking out into the shoulder. So uh the state, you know, from a safety perspective, uh, wants that twenty-two and a half feet from its shoulder to the face of gate for a, a typical or a larger pickup truck or maintenance vehicle. Uh, we proposed a couple ideas with the state. Uh, they're acceptable to it at this point, at least verbally, uh, Louie, the developer's engineer. And uh proposing that we just pockets, create a pocket gate coming back seventeen of the fence line. Now it has a slide gate in rather than lighter type gate, uh, because of the proximity between the gate and the house, which would replace, there'd be parked car on this driveway. Uh, the gate was a swing gate like it is now, uh, because it's seventeen feet closer to the house.
Thank you.
There would be a few trees removed uh along there as well, but it appears from the drawings that I've seen, provided by the developer, uh, the gradient will work, fence can stay where it is. There's some additional garden rail needed. Uh, the gradient will work, fence can stay where it is, there's some additional guardrail needed. Uh, to the south because of the the steep bluff drops off again on Tom's fence. Uh, but we've asked also the cost of, because it's occurred on top by the developer. Uh, to cover the cost of the gate and some visual barrier plantings because now in headlights, it'd be any right in Tom's house. Directly across uh from uh the access point. Uh, proposal that I kind of suggested, I think, you know, both you uh, your person Johnson and also developer. Uh, with only the first ten lots being proposed in the first phase and the developers here can uh test some of this. But the state says, well, we really don't need the turning lane in the bypass, it's only ten homes in there because it doesn't generate enough trips. I just want to go beyond that, apparently some lot, a lot's developed and the turn might be required. Uh, so so one thought is to uh maybe have the developer put up either a bar or a test roll. Costs that would be incurred for the turn lanes with the state, if he doesn't build them at this time, so the town doesn't get stuck with the obligation. Continues with the development beyond ten. And in the meantime, give him a look at a better access to that property would be to the north to get up to County D, closer to the interchange in sixty-four. Where most of the trips are going to be generated towards Stillwater, Minnesota. Rather than the primary, it's just being up the south, we're going through the roundabouts, making the triangle. It's really not the most convenient access to the property. That buys a little bit of time that this bypass does not be put in, it may never be put in if. Uh, the developer uh can find another access to the north. But it's just a proposal, an idea we kind of threw out, but the town is willing to move this gate back. Uh, if it's if it's developed at this time, uh the state is in agreement with that as being an acceptable uh solution. Uh, at that location and that we asked as part of the developer's agreement, ask of replacing uh only a two-year-old gate. Uh, with a new slide type gate, making like the fence modifications. And some planting materials that would obstruct some of the headlights uh shining into his his home bedroom. Uh, be covered by the developer, the developer's agreement.
Okay, a a couple of things I will comment on is that if I understood correctly, this is an eleven lot subdivision. Not a ten, there's ten lots scheduled for homes, but there's an eleventh lot on part of it. That's what triggered these bypass lanes. The town, I don't know that this board would entertain. Money being put in escrow because it never seems to be enough when the time comes to install. That's what we've always found because prices go up. Um, once this development is approved, the town gets the permit for these bypass and turn lanes. And the developer has to put them in. That's how that works. I don't know in this board if anybody is willing to take on that responsibility. Of taking money that may or may not be enough. His access to the north is limited because he doesn't have access to the north. He's up against other properties that would have to give him that access, so he can't get through there. This is his access. So whether or not the board entertains some sort of um mitigation here for these costs. That's up to this board as to what they think. At, you know, as I told you, this house is a house that was purchased. With a right-of-way in front of it that you've been using, obviously, as does everybody up and down there. But then when something like this happens, you find out exactly where it is. And I mean, I live on this road right here and I have sixty-six foot right-of-way in front of part of it, but it's a hundred. Also in front of part of it, so I know how that all changes and can affect your property. So I'm opening this up to the board, they contacted me and asked for. An opportunity to speak to this board about their questions and concerns and their impact of this development, so that's why they're here tonight and. Um, I will entertain questions and concerns from the board and where you think this should or should not go.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is ugly.
I know it is.
Uh, I guess I'm gonna ask Nick to speak. Where 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 do we belong and not belong in this situation?
Well, I don't.
And the other thing that I'm gonna put the crème de la menton is, what about the trail?
Well, that hasn't been decided yet.
That's across the street, well, I mean, that's part of the show, right?
Yeah, I don't know, did. Planning staff take a look at?
And they were thinking of jumping in the yard. Has County talked to you about the bike trail?
No, because it's not.
You might have a surprise.
It's not on his side of the road.
Uh, today.
Today.
The cemetery was.
Right, I know. I know.
Lee, do you recall whether the whether planning staff took a look at the impacts of that intersection? And made any recommendations?
Well, I think the issue of the turn lanes has always been one that's come from the state.
Right.
Yeah.
And. But in terms of the lights and the.
Not.
Visual impacts and.
Not that I'm aware of. I I don't recall that.
No.
Yeah, because it, you know, ultimately. I just don't know that it was, I don't know that it was addressed, right? And and so, I mean, here it's. It's later in the process, we're at the point of presenting the development agreement to the board, probably at the next. Next month's meeting. You know, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know what's been discussed with the the developer at at this point, I mean, certainly it's it's appropriate to try to mitigate. Impacts of development, um but, you know, at the same time, whether this is something that should legitimate be. Legitimately be viewed as an impact that is the responsibility or should be the responsibility of of the developer. Or, you know, whether it's a a hazard of being owning a property on thirty-five in that in that location. Around property that that could well develop, you know, I just don't have have enough information without. Without studying it, um and so, you know, I I guess I I understand the concern, but I haven't, you know. Unless directed by the town board, I haven't spent any time looking at it, so.
I think we should table it then, this is a pretty big ass deal.
Right, and that's why I, they contacted me and I just said, this is not something that.
Oh, okay.
It has to come before this board because this is way bigger than anyone can say a ye or nay to.
This is the start of a workshop.
Yeah, I I guess the the question is, I I have the the letter. But just describe in your own words what the specific ask is that you're you're looking for. The town board to incorporate in the in the development. Agreement and what it is that we're trying to to protect against or or mitigate here as a result of of the development.
Yeah, on uh, about three weeks ago, we put together. Such a a thing to maybe be included within the developer's agreement, uh, sent it to Chairman Johnson. Uh, as the as the owner of this property, uh located directly across from the post development access road. Of the itching post real estate development site. Um, and not a post developer.
It's in your drive.
But but request that the developer, the Department of Transportation make concessions to. Uh, to help cover some incurred costs and accommodate, maybe accommodate the bypass lane. Uh, one of them is to install that guardrail on this deeper portion, which state is requiring anyway, just from a safety standpoint. And now that that bypass lane is closer towards the fence and the and the drop-off down to the river southeast end. Uh, there is guardrail that has to be replaced to accommodate that and they're extending it a little bit longer to. Make it safer for the motors to come back, you know, in alignment, which makes sense.
So let, so let me stop you there, so have we seen anything from the state that requires that that provision be. Or that obligation be included in our development agreement?
Well, the state told us that they would inform us as to what they want those lanes to look like, so if they want to have guardrail along those lanes, they will tell us. So until he gets to a point here, then Lee will be back in contact with our state person at the DOT. And they will supply us with the standards that they want us to meet and if they want guardrail along that west side. Which it sounds like they will because we're so close to that bluff.
Yeah.
That if you go flying off there, you're you're going a long ways, so.
And and I asked the question from the perspective of drafting a development agreement which identifies. Public improvements that need to be installed and the amount of the letter of credit that will need to be supplied to cover those public improvements. Right, so we don't, we don't have any information on that piece as of yet.
I think Lee can have another conversation with them, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess the the. Maybe to reiterate something that everyone realizes is that the state has their control with the town. And the town has control with the developer, so the state is saying, town, if you're going to do this development, you need to have these bypass lines. So obviously then we're we're referring that responsibility to the developer. Um, my understanding in talking with the engineer for the development uh earlier this week. Is they're still continuing to try to figure out the design of that, as you can see, you know, the. There's not a lot of space there to achieve that result, so they're still working through. You know, whether or not they can make this work without the fence being moved, you know, somewhat farther back or off the state right away, sure.
So my question is something that Nick alluded to here is that. If all the work for putting in the turn lanes on the highway is done. Within the legal boundaries of the right-of-way that the state has, you know. What real responsibility or, you know, responsibility is that. For any mitigation to occur, and I'm not not being negative, I'm just raising a question here. For somebody who happens to live there and is impacted by it, but it's everything is done within the law.
Right.
I mean, it's very, I don't want to say it's similar to, but it's, you know, with with the party that came in. And talked to us about old Highway thirty-five and their entrance right across the park. You know, everything is being done with a in accordance with the law and they're looking for some mitigation. But it's just because they live there and happen to be across from a new development, you know, it's kind of. You know, the, when a property, when somebody buys a property, they can't control what somebody does on the other side of the road.
No, and and that's and that's true, although. Uh, an approving governmental authority has the right to condition approval on mitigation measures, right? So if a landowner owns a house and suddenly there's a new road that gets approved. And now all the headlights from the vehicles traveling down that road are going to shine into a window. You know, to the extent that there is a desire on behalf of the town or to say there need to be mitigating. Actions taken, the town board has that authority. I guess my my question is. Knowing where this road is going to be, is is going to come in, you know, is there anything that the town board can can really do to require mitigation?
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, you can't, you can't put mitigation in front of the road, right? And you can't put mitigation on the other side of the road, we can't force that. And so, you know, it sort of is where it is, that the the town is or the the road is going to be located where the where the road is. Now, you know, to the, to the point of can we require certain things be done with respect to. The actual public, public improvements, well, you know, just like the county tells us what their requirements are. The state tells us what their requirements are and then we just adopt those requirements and build them into. Our development agreements for the the requirements that the developer is is obligated to to follow, so. So what I'm trying to get my my arms around is, you know, if there's a, if there's a fence in in the right-of-way and the fence. Shouldn't be there because it's in the right-of-way, well, the state's going to say you need guardrails and perhaps that fence has to come down. But to your point, all that work is done in the right-of-way, so there's really nothing that we can order. Or require on that, on that point.
But how how does the town have the authority to? To require mitigation by the developer for something that's done within the legal boundaries. That that the highway went in within all the legal constraints of their right-of-ways and everything. And it just happens to be impacting the neighboring property owner, how can the town? Force a develop, any developer, I'm not talking about this one here, any developer to mitigate um a solution.
The the town, the town has the discretion so that the town could say. The road shouldn't be in this particular location for X, Y, and Z reasons, right? You've already approved the preliminary plat on this one, so that ship has has sailed.
Sailed.
Right, so so that the the road's not moving. And so, you know, to the extent that there is a request from the owner homeowner to have the road in a different spot, I don't see that. But if if they were here saying, well, that road shouldn't should not have been approved where it was approved. That's since passed and and we can't go back and and revisit that. And again, it's it's why I'm trying to figure out what what the actual request is, anything within the right-of-way. It it's the state's right-of-way, it's not our right-of-way, right? So the state's going to tell us what needs to be in that right-of-way, turn ring, uh turn lanes, guardrails, you know, whatever it is, we don't have any jurisdiction over it. So to the extent that they're asking for something that be done in the right-of-way. This town board doesn't have the authority to require the developer to do anything in that in that right-of-way. So again, you know, just trying to figure out what's the, what's at the heart of the request here and is there anything that we really have jurisdiction or authority over? Uh, or is it really, uh, do we need to direct these folks back to the state to say your conversation is with them and we'll take our direction from the state?
Anything from anyone else on the board that wants to ask any questions on this? I I have to agree with you, I think that's where we're at, I I've. I've looked at this property very closely, I've driven by it multiple times. It's a difficult piece of property, I mean, it's beautiful from where you're out the back door. But um the front is difficult because you're, I mean, as you can see, you're right up against that right-of-way. Um, and I think that there has to be a conversation with the state as to where they're going with this. And I think maybe we can directly to have that conversation with them and see what they're going to do. Because we really can't finalize this developer's agreement until we know that anyway.
Well, I mean, the developers, the development agreement will say that they are. Required to comply with any obligations imposed by. The Department of Transportation.
Yeah.
I mean, that's that's what it will, that's what it will say. Now, from the perspective of. Identifying the amount of money that they will need to spend in improving Highway thirty-five. You know, the reality is, I suppose, it's not a letter of credit in in our favor because we don't have jurisdiction over. Highway thirty-five, we have jurisdiction over the other private or the the other public improvements. Um, but I I suspect that there will be a letter of credit requirement for all work within that. That right-of-way, right, and it's probably going to be fairly fairly significant, so we just don't know what the scope is. And the state will determine that that scope and whatever the state tells us is the requirement will be the requirement.
So what he submitted to you in your drive was the cost of changing his um gating to his property. And also some estimates for trees that would help break the um sightline and the glare of the headlights. Did I say that correctly? Because you have two estimates on the trees and one on the gate, correct? So I'm just making you all aware of what that says, so where does the board want to go with this?
Essentially, we're kind of sort of on the same with the guardrail, the state has already addressed that and the required a guardrail. Kind of replace and follow the new bypass lane uh that's out there, so that's kind of a sort of a viewpoint, but. Big thing is that, you know, we're working with the state and so far they've come back and said the best mistake where it is. With the exception of this offset at the gate so that a vehicle can turn in to his property without sticking out back into the road. And uh, I proposed to them the seven-foot offset or pocket in the gate. Uh, at which at this point, they're they're acceptable uh verbally anyway, but that being a good idea. Uh, and then we kind of brought up the trees, especially if there's some trees that get removed, at least to have an opportunity to get some of that screening back. Considering that the higher flare, the headlights, all the gaming break that Tom's property as they come out of the development. Uh, and some of that, this, you know, it's a new site, he's got a brand new gate there that hasn't been usable for the gate type. If we get an opportunity to have some of the costs that's incurred by this project. Uh, done by the developer, or some of those costs have been covered by the developer. Uh, because it wouldn't have, uh, hadn't been done in the first place, it wasn't for this project, uh, don't seem like it's too. Uh, because it wouldn't have, uh, hadn't been done in the first place, it wasn't for this project, uh, don't seem like it's too short to ask.
I guess, I think it's fair to, fair to ask, I just don't know that we have, we have the authority.
Right.
Given that the road has been approved where it's, where it's been approved and, and this this property is, I, I mean, that ultimately to the extent that anything needs to be done on your property, it's, it's not as a result of the town's approval, it's as a result of the widening of, or the requirements to the right of way of Highway thirty-five. So, uh, you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the conversation to the extent that we would, we would require the developer to pay for private, private improvements because a gate was installed in a place that the gate can't be installed as a result of the widening of the highway within the right of way for the highway, right? I mean, that's I just don't, I, well, I understand why it feels like it's connected to the development. The highway can't expand beyond the right of way of the highway. And that's why highways are, have the right of way that they, they do so that all the work can, can be done in the, in the right of way, and that's why you're required to, to build outside of the setback so that there's enough room for you to have access to your, your property off the right of way. So, I just, I'm, I'm challenged by the request, even though it feels like a reasonable request. It, it also feels like that the issue has been contributed to by where the fence is located, how the, how the existing fence has been designed, and then it, this is not necessarily an issue that has in fact been caused by the approval of the development.
Yeah. Jay, you wanted to say a quick comment?
Just uh, should be noted that when the fence and the gate were built. It was not on the highway department right of way. Thirty, forty years ago, when they rebuilt Highway thirty-five and redesigned it, they expanded the right of way. They are in other places along thirty-five. And took additional property from the landowners prior to Mr. Tierney owning that property. And expanded the right of way, right now, including the front steps of the house are on state right of way.
Right.
Because of the way they drew it. That existed. The house and the fence and the gate all existed prior to the state taking that right of way.
Right. But then it becomes nonconforming, as we all know, when rules change, it becomes nonconforming.
Yeah.
I mean, I live in a nonconforming house, so I'm well aware that rules change and that's what it puts you at.
Right.
Um, is anyone willing to make a motion here, or do you, we're gonna let this roll for another month, or are we, what are we doing?
Well, so, uh, uh, this kind of a referee learning curve, you t- tell me if I'm out of line. So have you had a conversation at the state level with the same person he has? That ought to be me.
Well, our conversations with the state were a while back.
Yes.
Just basically.
So have you shared names with him?
Mark, not with you necessarily, but I think here on some of the correspondence uh. He said, but Mark Balker uh is the uh Wisconsin Northwest Region Planning Engineer. Uh, he's the one that we've had conversations with and back and forth. I've also talked to Louis, the engineer, the developer, uh, who's developing the plans for the state that are reviewed for performance. And the state expected to get plans from Louis about eight and a half, two weeks ago. Uh, so that they could review it uh before this board meeting, and I have not heard anything back from the state. Having received those plans have made their review.
I guess there's our answer for that.
I think we, I, I can re-agenda this for next month and we can revisit it and see if we have some answers from the state and then know where we're going. I, I agree with what Nick has said, I mean, there's a right of way that exists there, like it or not, it's there. And all of us who live in nonconforming houses have to deal with that. And I have that on one complete side of my house, so I know what that means.
I think it should be noted here too, nobody's talked about the cost of these two things, but I, the, the two proposals for the gate and the trees uh approaches fifty thousand dollars in that general area, just so everybody knows, it's not a small amount of money. You know, so I, I want that out there.
Right. And, and that's a lot to ask of a developer, any developer.
And it is the cost that Tom expected to incur with building the new fence and the new gates on the two years old. Uh, when he accepted the fact that the developer is gonna go across the way, had no objection to the fact that developer was gonna go in, he didn't know that the road would be exactly in front of him, or that he knew that it would cost him nearly fifty thousand dollars out of his own pocket now to accommodate developers' access point. So that's that's when, you know, it became more of a reality that this development is not just gonna be a few hoses on the distance. But the driveway is directly across from his and it's required him to retreat.
I get that.
Part of it, so.
I get that, but also when you do work on your own home and you're doing work in the right of way. And I deal with this on a monthly basis with people. Um, I put it in every single newsletter that goes out there about the right of way, the right of way, the right of way. And people still think that infringing upon it is okay, so when Todd Tuma comes through there and rips off every single one of your sprinkler heads. It's a problem and it continues to be so because it is the right of way, so um, I will put it on the next agenda, we will revisit this whole thing, cause we have to have that developer's agreement anyway, and um hopefully, we can have, um, Lee have one more conversation with the state on this and then come back.
I, I think the other part, part two is Highway thirty-five could have expanded to four lanes.
Yes.
Right? It, it hasn't, it's two lane. But if it expanded to four lanes, you'd be dealing with the same issue in having a driveway that's difficult to use and um, a fence that's, that's still in the, in the right of way. And so, I mean, that's, that's why the right of way is there for the highway to expand to accommodate additional traffic and, and development. And as I think Teresa said, well, nonconforming uses are at risk when uh, there is additional development and anything in the right of way is at risk, whether it's sprinkler heads, whether it's fences, whether it's mailboxes. You know, whatever it is that, that's there. Local government is not responsible for what you place or what's been placed in the, in the right of way, so you know, I'm sympathetic to the fact that the right of way may have expanded. It doesn't expand without compensation and it doesn't expand just because the state wants it to expand, there's a process for that as well. Uh, but, but that being said, I mean, you'd be in the same, you'd be in the same position, maybe even a worse position if, if the highway had expanded to four lanes.
Yes.
Um, as opposed to this being a development on the other side of the road. So, you know, all things to think about as we, as we look at this and move forward with it.
All right, thank you for coming in and we'll see you next month. I'm gonna make a motion right now to pull eleven A, the Holden MS four presentation up to this point in the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Am I opposed? It passes. Come on up to, for the MS four, you can go up here to the table, just give me just one second to get it up on here. Um, so every year we go through the MS four presentation. And it is on your table and it has to do with our annual permit. Just give me a second, I'm trying to talk and do it at the same time and sometimes I do that better than others. So, share. Thank you. Is it up there? It's up there. There we go, hold on just a second, let me get rid of this. All right, so. I gotta oh, gosh. All right, you ready? Go ahead.
Sure.
Is that where I have to be? Am I okay?
Yeah.
All right.
So this is the annual presentation for the MS four permit that the town of St. Joseph has. It's designated an MS four portion of the town, that the MS four community by the Department of Natural Resources. And the Department of Natural Resources that made an effort to protect the
Can I have you pull that microphone just a little closer to you?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the St. Roy River is impaired water body for nutrient phosphorus. The same um and phosphorus has implications, negative and impact on fish, shell, shellfish and aquatic organisms. Um, reduces growth algae, reduction in zonal oxygen in water column. Which then impacts all the three organisms that are mentioned and impacts the uh desirable fish that we want and leaves the conditions of, you know, less desirable fish. Okay. What does MS four target? Well, MS four stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. And it's designed to improve the stormwater leaving facilities owned and operated by these pellets. Grant systems, streets, ditches, this is not a system that targets homeowners and their cul- and their road culvert crosses. Next slide.
Yeah.
So, the portion of St. Joseph's that's impacted is uh, the, we, Fulton, three hundred and twelve acres, that's the designated MS four area. And this area drains to the St. Roy River.
Not so fast.
Uh, and this area is, has a TMDL um, to manage the nutrient phosphorus. TMDL stands for total maximum daily load. And this whole program, MS four, the DNR is all trickle down from the Clean Water Act, that is a federal regulation. The Clean Water Act requires the state every two years to assess their water bodies and determine whether those water bodies are impaired. If the water bodies aren't repaired, then the states need to establish uh total maximum daily load for that water body in order to bring it into the desirable water quality standards. So the St. Roy Water, St. Roy River has a total maximum daily load over hits. And then this area of St. Joseph has done a total maximum daily load study and assigned percentage of phosphorus removal for developments occurring in this three hundred and twelve acre area. Next slide. So basic components of the MS four permit, there's six minimum control measures. Well, public education outreach. Uh, which this meeting is a portion of that.
Yeah.
Public involvement participation. Illicit discarders, detection and elimination. You know, pollutants leaving property that's um shouldn't be leaving. And done purposely, construction site pollution control. And then post-construction stormwater management and just general overall pollution protection. Next slide.
Oh geez, hold on, there.
So, basic other component, basic components of the MS four permit and then part of this is there was modeling done to develop a TMDL for that three hundred and twelve acre area. Down. And uh, a storm sewer system map that's developed. And, and then, and then we have annual inspections of the storm sewer system in, in the, in the area. Next slide. Public education, outreach and public involvement, so the town puts out publication newsletter on the, I, at least yearly basis. Town has a website with information on MS four phone mark and how to reduce pollutants. And then this annual meeting is part of it as well. Next slide. Illicit discard, detection, elimination, so town has ordinance. Uh, since these type of discharges, inspections are done by the, by the town on, on an annual basis.
Yep.
And then there's a portion procedure. This, this charges are, are um Next slide. Other portion of MS four is construction site pollution control, so just regulating construction sites, the plan review process. Inspections, there's enforcement procedures if we have issues in the town. Next slide. And then post-construction stormwater management, regulation of stormwater management features that have been constructed. And in the town that's often delegated down and how this is applied town-wise is often delegated down to homeowner associations. And segueing that, MS four area is restricted, is focused primarily on that three hundred and twelve acre area. But a lot of this public education that goes across the town and ordinances are obviously carried out throughout the, throughout the town, so it, really, most of the town is benefiting or under this program. Pollution prevention. The town does street sweeping with the um salt is applied and we report annually on sand and salt that we apply and then sand, we vacuum up at the end of the winter season. So it's hungry, uh, St. Joseph's applies to the MS four permit, we have town ordinance, we have land, we have a storm sewer system map in the MS four area. Done stormwater quality modeling, TMDL model and plan. Any requirements ongoing, ongoing, we have stormwater related articles, newsletters, websites. This annual meeting, we have report, annual report goes to the DNR. Inspections, volunteer events, and then, you know, improvements that the town does, for example, the church street project and the ravine stabilization that occurred. Upcoming required activities. Well, we need to update the storm sewer system map to reflect the church street improvements. We always do the annual inspections and cleaning of our drainage system as necessary. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
I should let you know that um I did have Todd take a look and open up those manholes and that storm sewer in Holton. Uh, he did about a month ago. And everything was clear there, he went through it all, he did check the ravine, he didn't walk the whole thing, but it looks well, I don't know if you guys have been over it to see how well seated down river. But he said from the top it looked good.
Not this year yet.
Not this year yet.
It's coming up.
But he did open up all the manholes and go through those. He did do them everywhere else in the town, I put the work order out and I said do that at the same time, and I know he's given you how much sand and residue he has swept up in this three hundred and twelve acre area, which he does every year, so you do have all those numbers. Um, we'll put this on our website, it will also be in the newsletter. Um, go ahead.
Could we get the uh, the dates and, and findings of Mr. Tuma?
Oh, sure.
Some
I can make sure.
Inspection so that we have that documentation for next year's report.
Oh, yeah.
So I did have one question, if we go back up to the uh, in the presentation. I think it was page or I'm gonna get it wrong. Now that I say that, I'm gonna have the wrong page number, I wanted to say it was five. It's the one with the uh blown out map drawn both for Holton and
Oh.
Um.
This one?
One more up please, or uh
One more down.
Down.
This one.
That one.
Okay.
So, we had made a plan to deal with the land that's just um, east of this zone uh colored in orange and green here at the south. Did we account for this in that plan? Did we call it out or address it in any way? Cause assuming if that land ever gets sold and used as it's zoned, it's gonna have runoff.
I don't believe it's in the MS four.
No.
No, but the runoff would be accounted, we would need to account for the runoff of that if it ever is sold, right?
It would be on its own property. It wouldn't run to MS four.
No, but it could hit the river.
Yeah.
It could hit, it could hit the river and they request a second MS four.
Yeah.
That's an area with the huge bluff there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's currently farmed. I don't think the family have a plan to getting rid of it, but just if something does happen where that becomes sold, it's rezoned as commercial, I don't want them to come in and then have this become more work.
Yeah. If that, if that were developed, we would need to look at that from the, from the perspective of the MS four.
Okay, but did we call it out when we made the initial plan for the road design and any of that?
No.
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 Okay, thank you.
You had a question?
In addition to this map, that's, good evening, my name is Lori DeRocher. In addition to the map that's currently on the screen, if you could please go forward, men chair to the next one.
You're the one that's back here?
Yes.
Okay.
So currently there is a piece of property that's for sale, I believe it is off of one hundred and thirty second street. And it is a recent CSM of yours that was done through here. And there is an outlot that is for sale on there. This is that they must contact the town board before any activity takes place on that. And the lot is for sale for over a million dollars. And I currently walked it and because I am not authorized to speak to our engineer or of course the town attorney or anything to that effect, I have had no one to report this to. I did mention my concerns to zoning. And felt that it was protected because of the condition that's put on the lot that stated right on the the paperwork that's shown on the website. And I'd like to report to you that this has been clearly marked on your original MS four within that district. And it is a major discharge unit for your MS four. This ravine, if you go out and personally walk it, it is brutal. And conveniently is being used for a dump site as they cleared the bluff line. There is, they're, they're throwing trees in there. There's miscellaneous tight rock things that have been apparently added to it. And at the time that this was being subdivided by this party, there were people that lived in the neighborhood that were well aware of the condition of that ravine and how it works. And when we have high water and large snowfalls and anything else for taking out water, they reported to the town board that this ravine should be protected and that it, it wasn't a buildable part. And it very clearly is not easily buildable. Buildable so between our MS four discharge unit and the setbacks off of Highway thirty five and the setbacks off of one hundred and thirty second. If I can, I stand corrected if I got the wrong little road there. I think it's my, uh. There really isn't any place to put a very large house or a garage or any other building on that thing. And that this, I bring it forward to you because it's tied to this particular report.
Okay.
And it is the responsibility of town to take care of the MS four.
Right.
And it protected. And, and I get a little bit of reading on this interest media not this, if this lot is sold and you have to develop this, this discharge unit to comply with National Seating Riverway or any, any other funding that goes along with this. The existing homeowners will be charged one half the cost of that restoration of that discharge unit.
Sure.
So this is a pretty, so I bring it to you today, you're on your plate, and I know that the appropriate people will look at it and see what we need.
And it's in the Riverway District, so the county also has a say on this too. So we'll take a look at that.
Is there an address to that?
I do, I will have to, is it on the, is it on Zillow, Lori? Is that where you saw it? Is on Zillow?
It's for sale. It's, it's posted. It's on the highway.
Okay, so it's on the highway.
Yeah, there's street signs and somebody by the name, last name.
Okay, Justin.
It's, it's preinitial.
You know, I get accused of a lot of things around here.
Okay, we'll look it up and we'll find out.
And just so you know, when you look on it, they put the flat map on and any of Manchester.
Okay.
Work that is done by the town board.
Okay.
And find your discharge unit, the discharge, it has a great big star on it. It's on our map that's on the MS four, our MS four.
Page. Okay. Well, we'll get a look on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else for him? We appreciate, we appreciate. We, I'm sorry, what? Okay.
When that was created, I thought one lot was like, nah, I ain't going there, can't do nothing.
I know. Well, we'll have to go back and look at that.
Where did you find it, Zach?
Zillow.
Zillow. Anything else for him? We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. We don't have to make a motion to accept this. We just are going forward and we'll get it in the newsletter coming out soon and it, she'll get it on the website. So we'll get that done. Thank you. I'm gonna take one more thing because you're Jennifer Heffron, aren't you? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to move number sixteen up to this point in time so she doesn't have to get bored to death any more than she already is. Come on up to the microphone, Jennifer. So Jennifer has applied for an operator's license, a new one. And we did do a background check on you. You did answer no to all your questions because what you have on your background check does not apply to that, correct? I can just look at the other side. But I know the board had some concerns. Because it asked here, have you ever been convicted on any, are you on any conviction of traffic violation, any crime, any civil forfeiture, any other violations? You do have some things on here, so you did not divulge them. And so when you say no, no, no. Get it a little bit closer to the microphone. So you do have some things on there that you did not answer truthfully to, and that's why we did not give you the license. So would you like to explain?
Um, I, it was on, it wasn't on purpose. I do have, I recently just reinstated, reinstated my driver's license. I just have previous tickets and before I started working at Bass like cheese factory, I wasn't working for medical reasons for a long time.
Okay.
It was just that reason. It wasn't an on it on purpose.
Okay. So I don't know where the board wants to go with this. And I, I can defer to Nick. I know in some cases we've allowed people to change their answers to match what their their paperwork says. In this case, none of her issues have to do with drugs or alcohol. But she did not answer truthfully to having a conviction, which you do. So it's up to the board whether you want to allow her to change her application to be truthful or just to deny her as it stands.
Well, and the good news is, this is why we have this process where we allow people to come in and speak to the board and you get to assess their credibility. And, and so, you know, certainly you can, you can accept the additional information that she's presenting here. As most of the time or many times, people just don't show up when they're given the opportunity to come, come talk to the board. So we certainly appreciate that. And it's well within the, the board's discretion to approve if the board sees fit.
I, I feel that I'm gonna make a motion to approve her operator's license because I feel she has been working for Bass like cheese. I don't, I don't feel that we should be stepping in the way of that.
But do you want to give her an opportunity then to change her answer on this form so that it's not incorrect?
Yeah.
So you can include that in your motion.
So I make a motion to approve the operator's license for Jennifer Heffron in the condition of correcting, correcting the new documentation for the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
You don't have any outstanding fines? You've paid everything and you're up to date? Okay. All right. Anyone else had any questions or concerns?
None for me.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. I'm gonna bring this over to you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for coming in.
So here's the ones.
I wouldn't have a server there.
I think that good information really is.
Okay, everybody, back on task we go. On to the building. So pay request number eleven from the building is in front of you. Anyone have any questions about that and who wants to make a motion?
I make a motion for pay request number eleven. One hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars and twenty five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
He says that so happily. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Do we know anything else on sacred rebates yet? Where are we at on that?
So I spoke with St. Croix Electric who was, um, no way.
Does, yeah.
No way. Yeah. So the confusion seems to be around the mailing was sent to Dairyland.
Yes.
And well, this is where it gets strange is that it, it's supposed to be operated through St. Croix Electric and then issued by Dairyland. So I'm trying to figure out if we can electronically just resubmit all of this instead of filling out a new form. So I have another call with them either tomorrow or Monday. Depending on whose vacation time I don't catch.
Okay. Well, good luck with that.
Yeah.
I don't have anything on change orders on this, on this one. I, it's, it's a standard, it's gonna stay on our agenda, just in case something comes up. I do have some new things on D on SOS. We originally had an estimate from SOS that is, we thought we were gonna be around forty thousand. We originally had it around thirty five. It has been dropped down to twenty eight thousand, seven ninety eight, forty five. That is in your drive. Terry and I met with him and the rest of the staff, went through every single piece of everything that's going in there. The reason it went down is that the fire department took the tables off that they decided they didn't need. We also got all the furniture that's up in the shed that we were going to pay for, but now it's up there free of charge thanks to Chris and Justin. So that's gonna go into that building. And so that's where the cost savings is here, which makes me feel good. I can say that. They've also included their cost for delivery and setup and moving because we are having them move those three two drawer fire safe cabinets that weigh, I swear, five hundred pounds apiece. They're moving them and the two, three drawer laterals that are in the office. And so that's all included in this. So if you're comfortable with this, we can finalize this out for that price and then we're gonna schedule them for the end of June.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve SOS's change to twenty eight, I gotta find my thing here, twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety eight dollars and forty five cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions regarding that?
Yeah, the number, is it, it's not just the one invoice and the G.
It's the two together.
Okay, thank you.
It's the two together because the tables were separate. Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. And then in your drive, I put two things in there. We need to build out this storeroom. The storage vacs that I am showing there, I gave you a picture of them. First of all, the picker, the stock picker cart is for all of the election equipment that can get rolled out into the big room and rolled back. And then the bulk storage, the ones with the particle board on them, I ordered these for the town of Hudson. And these things are phenomenal. There's not a screw in them. They all just.
Where is this under?
Right here under storage and racking, D two. And it's in the drive.
I'm trying to find it in the drive. I, I don't see anything for.
New town hall building, pictures of equipment. And then the next one is update on furnishings for the town hall.
You know, it's where I work in computers. My shared drive gives me seven C and then twelve.
Oh, ninety one and ninety two. Ninety two. I don't know, talk to her.
I'm gonna do something I never get to do. I'm gonna pass the laptop to someone else.
Someone else. So let me just talk briefly about this. So this has to do with the racking. Oh, you're in April, you're not in May.
Why would it be the Y of the SOS invoices in April?
Because it was in there then and then it was in there now.
Oh, for the love of.
She's a rock star.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you tried unplugging it, plugging it back in is where I am. Yeah, turn the power on. That's how my day is done.
You know, I've had this kind of week too, so I really appreciate it, Justin. We put in five thousand dollars for this build out of this storeroom. Right now I have it at four thousand, forty two dollars plus delivery. And I don't know what that delivery is gonna be because right now that storeroom is full of stuff. She and I are gonna try to get in there in the next two weeks and chalk out on the floor how this racking is gonna fit in there and make sure it's gonna fit like we think it is. So I've kind of picked it. I hope that the board will be okay with us going through, through this with, in that five thousand dollar price range. But I wanted you to see what we were doing and how it was gonna go and what it was going to look like. So does anyone have any questions? And are you comfortable that we'll just move forward with this?
These aren't the ones from Uline, are they?
Yes, they are. That racking from Uline is absolutely amazing.
Yeah, you gotta get it in before the term. Yeah, I have some of it. It's, it's good stuff.
It's good stuff. Also, I have scheduled the work crew from the the facility in Richmond to move all the stuff from that shed down here next Wednesday at eight thirty. They charged me two dollars a man for the day. And I need them for a couple hours and they'll bring the trailer to transport it all. I've also asked them to give us a date, the end of June to move over there. Right now he's not able to commit to that. So I may be looking for some help to move us, but.
Are we able to commit to that?
I'm committing to that.
You're ambitious.
I always am, Justin. You should know that about me by now. Anyway, we are moving forward and if I can get them scheduled, that's what we will do. So right now, that's the plan. But Wednesday, we're gonna move everything out of, up there. Give you some room. Anyone have any questions about that? Then the pay request on the sanitary system came in. Finally, here it is. Whoa, whoa, yes. Any, have any questions about this? Who wants to make a motion?
I make a motion for pay request of Zappa Brothers for the septic system.
For forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty four dollars. How's that?
Forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty four dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions concerning that? Everything's done on that, right? It just has to get hooked up.
Yeah.
Okay.
That part works, right?
Yeah.
That part works. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Where are we on the well testing and fire suppression system? I wasn't at the meeting today. I know you had one and I know you're waiting on.
It's in transit. Are you an answer?
We'll let him answer.
Okay.
Bruce is online.
Bruce is online as well, but basically the bottom line is, is that the pump is still in transit. We're anticipating receiving it next week, at which time we will do the test pump.
And then we'll have some answers and we have some things to discuss in closed session. Anything else on that? Um, anything else on the building that I didn't have, that I didn't think of? Anything else you want on next month that we haven't thought about? So.
So in looking at, and I was not part of the concrete conversation, so these two gentlemen, if they have anything to add to that, please feel free. But knowing that the pad in the back has to come up for the generator.
Yep.
I did ask that we pivot it ninety degrees so that Terry doesn't have a window that faces a, a seven foot tall generator.
Yep.
Because I figured that might be a waste of having a window then.
Yes.
So that's, that is one thing. And then I did do a walkthrough for the first time seeing that building. And there were just a few little questions I had, but outside of that.
It's looking good.
I guess since we're discussing that, it better be absolutely dialed in. When we get to that point of a generator. Because gas is potentially gonna change.
Yep.
The electric hookup's gonna change. So, there's a lot of fluid in this decision, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's actually a question I think, uh, Richard brought up earlier, which is depending on the generator configuration changes, the piping in that pit. That you're outside my education on this part. Um, if we're moving it, can we put in the larger pipe when they pour it? And do a step down so that we don't have to do this a third time?
I, how I understood it was the juice from the street.
I can't wor, I, I'm more worried about just pouring concrete right this question.
I mean, the big yellow tube of natural gas coming from the street needs to be bigger. That's how I understood it.
Okay.
Everything stems around.
Does the well.
The well.
Did they have a, an estimated time in Bruce, maybe you can answer this, I don't know, when they were gonna redo the concrete? Uh, no, not even a rough date. August, September.
They're waiting until we confirm the, uh, well pump.
Right.
Okay.
And, and then make, make the decision on the generator size because the current concrete pad was poured incorrectly. And needs to be replaced at Burghammer Builders' cost.
Yeah, my question is just typically around that generator pad because it has to change either way.
Right.
So, my question was around, cuz I don't know how the piping is put in. Is it put in underneath the concrete? Is it put around the concrete?
Underneath.
Yep.
And, uh, so it's out in the open here. I think some things are gonna change to bigger stuff.
Yeah.
So, the location's gonna be.
But the fact remains it wasn't done correctly. It's gotta be replaced and Burghammer's taking care of that concrete.
And yes, the pad can get changed.
Yeah, I figured the ninety degrees part, part I wanna make sure is that if we're changing it, we're putting in the right sized pipe.
Yep.
Once.
Yep.
Cuz I don't want to revisit.
Yep. Yep.
Thank you.
And, and confirming the, uh, the natural gas feed to the building and to the generator will happen, uh, as soon as we know that the well pump works and, and, uh, size generator.
And Bruce, can you just speak briefly to what's happening with the sidewalk that was installed incorrectly?
Yep, so Ron did bring up, uh, at the meeting this morning, uh, concern with, uh, his review with Albrightson that's gonna do the concrete replacement, um, that the revised plans were directing them to make changes that were four to five inches from the original plan. I talked with both Mike Hirsch and Kelly Schlegel. Um, Mike Hirsch is, is tied up on other projects. And Kelly is at a conference this week. Um, she's gonna get back to me with times that she's available to meet onsite with Ron and Albrightson to walk through the revised plans, um, so that Kelly can show what changes have been made. And both Kelly and Mike believe that, uh, they're actually reducing, uh, some of the work that needs to be done. So, um, that's kinda where it's at right now.
All right. Any questions on that? Okay, well, move ahead. Um, Terry had the estimate from Tim Whiteside for the, um, electronic door locks here with the fobs. She didn't get in the drive, so she's making copies for us right now. So, we'll come back to that in just a moment cuz that's on our build out for the fire hall. Updates that we approved, the new doors and locks, but we did not get the Whiteside side of it done. That is the fobs and the whole system. So, she'll bring that out to us. Oh, she's quick. She's coming right now.
Thank you.
So, that's the last thing that we have to approve on your side here for these doors, correct?
So, according to Ron, he has to make a change to the, to his side because there's another five hundred dollars. He doesn't know what he has for the engine running the wire all the way to the door. Also. Him and to be, it's part of his labor with running that.
Yeah. No, he's got it. He's got it on here.
That's, that's what Ron was talking about this morning is that their electricians are running wires.
So, we had that discussion last, two weeks ago. And I understood that the electrician's putting in the piping. And Whiteside is running the wiring. There's too many, too many forks on the.
Too many chiefs in the kitchen.
Too many chiefs in the kitchen. We'll prove this tonight. With them figuring out who's doing what on the wiring, but that's what I understood. I talked to Ron and I talked to Tim and the two of them talked. So, that's what's on Tim's here is the wiring. He's got two hundred and fifty feet of it. So, anyone wanna make a motion to approve this estimate?
Oh, sure.
Ah, everything else is going well for me today.
Why not?
I'll make a motion to approve the estimate one-one-zero-one-six for Sunning Link in the total of five thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Thank you. Okay, you're up. On to rock containment.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, tonight. Uh, so, my proposal that you have here, one piece is from Tuma Excavating and one piece is from the wall supplier. You can see that I have measurements which this project would be north of the shed. And, uh, one wall would be approximately thirty-two and a half feet long. The back wall would be thirty-two and a half feet long. And then, the north wall of it would be fifty-five. And the cost of it there is fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. And you can see on the second page, the footprint of how that would look. You know, most of us call them silo bunkers. They're eight and a half feet tall as my, um.
Can I just, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I don't think we pay tax.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we'd be at thirteen, six, six, two.
Okay. All right. And then, uh, that would allow us to get the chip seal rock stored in a pile and then other future uses for it. Instead of having it all out in the driveway for the summer, we could get it pushed up as they deliver into that area. I'm gonna say probably two-thirds of it would fit in that area. There'll be probably a window of it out from there, but at least it'll be organized.
And it would be easier to contain than it's not gonna be all over the grass.
Right.
So, a couple of things. This, I just wanna make everyone aware, this stays within our property line.
Correct. So, that's the other thing. If you wanna educate yourself, walk out there. I have one last in the ground, which is kind of on the crest of the top of our property that is thirty-eight feet to the edge of the county road, which is what they told me to stay away. Or that, that's our right of way.
Their right of way.
This project fits inside of our property.
And then, you had Tuma take out some trees up there already.
For, for everybody to look at and, and hoping the project move forward.
He did call me because he said this, the fifty-five feet that you were talking going from west to east would take out that other big tree. And he didn't know for sure if that was where you wanted to be. And I just said, we would be discussing tonight that that would still have to come out too.
Yep.
Okay. What does everyone wanna say about this? Yes, sir.
Tuma said that he looked at stuff that was on the side of the shed at the back, which is the stuff that we were getting rid of.
Okay.
Did that happen? I, I did not, I would not.
So, it was no fire stuff that we moved.
There was a pump.
Pump that we wanted to discard.
Yes.
It is discarded.
Fantastic. Cuz he doesn't wanna have to go back out there and haul all of the weeds. Okay. Any other questions on this? So, this is gonna be a cost to us. Um.
Nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Yep. So, about twenty grand.
Well, plus, cuz Todd said the town pays for rock. I don't know, how much rock does he need?
Right.
It, you know, it'll, it'll be a couple grand probably.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's our reduced price.
Cuz we, we contract directly. Upcharge. Um, and they want twenty percent down on this. So, when we give them a twenty percent down payment to Wiser, we will tell, send us, send our tax certificate with it so we don't pay tax. Who wants to make the motion?
Well, before we do that, well, go ahead and make a motion. So, I, I guess from my education, we're gonna make a just, it's gotta be two, there's every two motions because it's two separate estimates.
No, you can make one motion altogether that we accept these two estimates. We're not giving too many money down. We're only gonna give. Yeah, just a pro, total project.
Okay. And then, I need to spell out the twenty percent down payment, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Which, does anyone know what that is up and?
Seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. No, I don't know.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Give me one second here. I gotta, I gotta do math. And I've, so far, so far, I haven't been real great tonight. So, anyone might wanna check my math here. I come out to twenty-seven, thirty-two, forty. Anyone else get that one?
I don't know. I haven't gotten there yet.
I used to cheat and score so on that.
No, cuz I only got a big twenty percent on that.
Twenty-seven, thirty-two, forty. You're right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Great. I'll make a motion.
All right.
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve both bids, uh, both for Wiser Concrete and for Tuma. In the total amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and a down payment of twenty-seven hundred dollars twenty-seven, thirty-two, forty to Wiser.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Where is this, which budget, um, what budget category is this coming out?
It's coming out of Public Works. It's Public Works. Well, they have extra money in their crack seal, seal account, account, seal code account because we didn't, um, spend all the money that we budgeted. Yeah. So, I expect that that's what we're gonna take it out of.
Okay. I wasn't gonna give the ledger. I don't know.
I know. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed, it passes. Thanks for doing all that work, Chris. I appreciate it. More to do. Okay, a couple of things on here. I know the Public Works, um, committee sent to us that they want to have some consistency in Holton, that all the signage would be twenty-five miles per hour through there from the roundabout up to the curb. Is that what it is, Jeff? Up to the curb on.
Yes.
On Main Street?
Yeah.
Um, is it twenty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five?
Fifty-five down, twenty-five from the roundabout.
Yeah. And is it thirty-five to twenty-five because that's what the state required at the time that we put, that the roundabout went in to, to give that gradual drop?
I think the thirty-fives are the, when the project was down there.
Oh, like Church Street and all that?
Yeah, when, when they, when they did the whole interchange, I, I believe thirty-five showed up with whoever.
Yeah.
Plugged all that in, right?
Right.
So, then, we feel twenty-five consistently through there is plenty good.
But does it give you enough space to drop down that speed limit coming off the roundabout? That's the question.
It's twenty-five right there on its own.
Where does it change to thirty-five up at the north?
In the middle of town.
Oh, in the middle. Okay.
I, I just feel it's uniform consistency, right?
It makes sense. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, and when you come out of the roundabout, you certainly don't, you're not going forty typically.
Well, some of us are.
Typically.
That's my grandson.
It depends on who's driving.
You guys.
I've heard, I've heard Chris has gotten some air out of that one a few times.
And take it all the way up past Tuma's house, right?
Correct.
That's the curve.
To the curve.
Right.
Not past, not past, just up to the curve.
Yeah, correct.
The section between the roundabout and the first twenty-five mile per hour speed limit sign, regardless what side it was on, was a very, very short distance.
Yeah.
So, that have a change in speed limit there didn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Okay. Who wants to make the motion to change that speed limit sign then?
I make a motion to change the speed limit signs in Main Street, uh, all to twenty-five miles an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Then, for control, have they been to speak to you guys about spraying weeds in the town? Where are we at on that?
So, for control has been out and they are spraying and they will be completed with the shoulder side.
Yep.
And then, uh, move on the spot spraying. So, they're out and about.
Okay, and they've got their map?
What?
They've got their map on.
I issued them a map.
Yeah, for the parsnip and all that stuff that Bob used to do.
Yeah.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure that got done.
They were present today onsite and I went to a couple of.
And then, I had this on here. There is a large oak tree on Thirty-seventh Street that I was informed that needs to be removed. Do you know?
This Thirty-seventh off of River Road?
Road, yes.
I'll get it gone.
Um, and if it, if it's too big for Tuma, we can call Willow and.
I, I'll go check.
Okay, you go check on that. That'll be on yours. And the driveway on Awatuki, where are we on that?
No one's here. Let's keep moving.
Okay. All right. Parks, Trails and Rec.
I hope they're online.
Huh?
I said, I didn't know they were online.
No. Parks, Trails and Rec.
Well, I guess keep it on the agenda for next month.
Yep.
Work.
Contract for the boosters for the use of the field. We don't have a contract yet with them.
For who?
The boosters.
Oh. Well, that was covered.
We received.
She doesn't have one yet. We haven't gotten a sign.
What, what, what are we calling the contract? They sent us a letter stating, uh, their, uh, parameters of which they'd like to work with us on for using the field.
Right.
And we approved that.
Right.
Do we need a, an actual?
We've always had a contract that we actually signed. So, I guess I need to delve into that a little bit more.
I, I thought maybe we would just initial that letter that they sent us. I mean.
Would you send that letter to Nick and see how he feels about that?
We've had a contract with the sandpipers.
Sandpipers. And we had boosters before that. We've always had a contract and that's why I wasn't sure that that letter was enough.
Well, tend, tend typically, the contract provides for insurance and indemnification.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Those are the. So, I'm gonna have the letter sent to him, have him look at it because I just wanna tidy that up.
That's fine. They, they won't have.
I, I know they won't, so.
Well, we just need to use the contract that we've had with sandpipers before and modify it for the boosters. That's fine too.
Yeah, we should probably look at the letter they sent to make sure that.
I'll have her send it to him.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, Plan Commission. Thanks for hanging in with us, Anton. Anything on nuisances, junkyards, enforcement issues that we can talk about in open session?
Nothing for me.
No.
Yeah, well, that's good. There's nothing new. I appreciate that. And then, you sent us the sign ordinance because you made some changes to that. Would you like to speak to that, please?
Um, sure. So, it came to our attention that, um, and thanks, Therese, that, uh, a Supreme Court decision had come down actually about ten years ago, um, saying that sign ordinances um, or sign regulation more generally, based on the content of signs, was unconstitutional. Um, that was a unanimous US Supreme Court ruling. And so, I took our sign ordinance, which had quite a lot of content-based regulation on signs and revised it so that the regulations are purely based around the, um, call it the structure of the signs rather than the content. So, we still have regulations, for instance, on the size of signs. We have regulation on, um, illumination of signs. We have regulation on, um, location and number of signs, but we don't have any differences based on the contents. So, for instance, we used to say garage sale signs are allowed. And now, we basically just say, you know, smaller, smaller signs, um, are allowed for temporary periods. As one example.
So, this is part of zoning, so it's gonna have to go for a public hearing. And so, it's on your agenda tonight to set for a public hearing and then have, um, our attorney review there. Um, our attorney review this. So that we have that information ready for next week, next time. Um, I want to set this for our next meeting, but um, we're gonna be going into closed session on some things. I just want to make the board aware that. We may have. It may be to be to our benefit to move our meeting in June up to the first Thursday. So I'm just gonna make a motion to set this sign ordinance for a public hearing at our meeting in June, whatever date that will be. And we'll set it for seven o'clock that night.
Second.
Um, any other discussion regarding that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. So Nick, then you can take a look at this and let us know if there's anything you want changed on that.
Yeah, and and to echo Anton's uh, point. Case law's been around for, for a long time, so this is, this is not new, but effectively if you have to read the sign. To determine whether it is appropriate or not under your policies. Your policy is unconstitutional.
Yes. Yep.
You cannot regulate based on the content of the sign. That violates your right to free speech under the First Amendment.
Nude girls, seven a.m.
That's what your science says.
If you have to read it. You can't judge what it is.
Correct.
Yep.
Anton did a nice job rewriting a lot of this, so.
Good job, Anton. I appreciate it. Alright, public records request.
I have only had a couple uh, for recordings, nothing else going on.
Well, that's encouraging.
That's very encouraging.
Because that takes so much time. Alright, appointments to committees, commissions and boards. So we have some new people on here. Um. We have two new people. We, we changed around Parks and Trails and Rec a little bit. They've asked that. And then Public Works has a, have two new alternates, Bill Murphy and Ernie Betker. And I have added um, Don Camia to Board of Appeals. As an alternate. I rewrote everyone. I didn't, I shouldn't say that. I kept everyone where they were on the committees. Um, just revised things a little bit to kind of push the work around, but. Hopefully any, nobody has any questions or concerns about this. And if so, I'd ask for a motion to approve these and then next month we will have to have a motion. On a new person for the Finance Committee, because there'll be a change there coming up, but not yet.
I make a motion on the appointed people for the. Committees and commissions and boards.
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Um, Richard, you're new, so we'll get you the information on the Lower St. Cray Partnership Team. And on the flag pole, because the flag needs to go up and down. You will be the liaison to the Fire Department. Everyone has an alternate on the board to whatever they're doing. If you can't be at whatever meeting you're supposed to be at. Please contact your alternate and if they can't, contact me. I'm usually available most times, not always, but that way someone is there. So feel free to let us know so we can, you know, take care of things. So keep this handy. It's also in your drive. Um, approval of town board minutes.
I make a motion to approve. Town Board Minutes for April tenth and also April fourteenth.
Is there a second? I'll second him. Are you trying to think if you were here at both of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember. I have to look. I don't remember.
I'll just steer clear.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. The twenty twenty-four audit was in your box. Um, anybody have any questions about it? Did you review it? Any comments? Otherwise I need a motion to accept the audit from CLA.
I make a motion to accept. The. Uh, audit. Information for twenty twenty-four.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Budget invoices, checks and bank balances. A couple of things. You've got your sheet here for the building. Um, it changes a little bit every time, but it's just something to keep track of, so you know where you're headed. You have the budget to actual and your transaction detail report for the month. If you have any questions, feel free to contact the office at any time. Um. We have checks here. Are they in order this time? They're in order this time.
Yep.
We have checks starting with twenty-five nine two one. Through twenty-five nine seven four. Including transfers and EFT payments to approve this month. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on any of the checks? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes, and I think. Did you start the signature page over there somewhere? It's over there.
I believe over with.
I just want to make sure it's coming around.
Is it done?
I haven't signed it.
I thought you had it.
No, I have not signed it. I just want to make sure I did. Okay, um, we have two post sessions here and because there are a variety of things that are on here. I would prefer. To take the one having to do with the building first. So Jay and um. Don, you can step out.